Oh, yeah, yeah.
So there's two islands there now.
It is now five thirty-two and a half. Fledgling allegiance.
Fledgling allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we want to do the consent agenda?
I am moving forward.
Second?
All in favor?
Upcoming swap meeting next one is Thursday, September twenty-third. At five-thirty, we are going to be back at the...
I have a question. That given the number of increases in cases over the last couple of weeks, I wonder if it's not a good idea just to be here? Is this better opportunity for social distancing?
Doesn't matter.
That's fine with me.
Okay, so it'll be here at the West Bath Fire Station until further notice.
Question. Maybe you could ask John Dean that. If no one else is being here right now, you can leave the tables up?
Yeah, we can ask him tomorrow.
We're planning our meeting Tuesday if you're having it here.
I was actually debating on moving it here again, just for safety's sake too. But I had to discuss it with any of the other board members, so.
So the three that are here.
There's three of us here. Would you guys prefer to move our meetings back to the...back here? For space and more room and...
Well, wherever the Germans think is fine. We'll follow you.
Yes, okay, can we move to here?
Okay.
In future, please. Thank you.
Do you want anything, is it okay to keep the tables set?
Yeah, it's fine, we're bad. Yep.
That's kind of where we're at.
Then we don't have to be going up and down the street on the floor and all that.
Yep, as it is, we can put the person who's coming.
Well, the fire chief had expressed that the cleaning staff likes the chairs up so that they can clean, so.
We can put the chairs on up to you.
Yeah, the chairs aren't a big deal. Tables are a little trickier.
And maybe we can find out what the schedules.
And how often is that done?
So don't anyone spill anything on the floor? And we'll be good. Nobody track for Jerry.
Do we have any selectmen comments, announcements?
I think we will, huh?
So let's go into agenda item number two, winter sand boots.
Okay, here are the bids. There's a copy for Carley, too. We received one bid from Country Bear. They're the same ones that provided the sand last year, and they're holding the price at thirteen ninety. Steve requested twelve hundred cubic yards this year.
And how much do we have left over from last year, even mild?
I can't give you an amount, but obviously we have enough to have Steve reduce the amount that he requested.
And as far as we know, they delivered as specified last year?
Yes, very good service.
So then we have...do we need another bid or do we sell?
No, we take care of the salt every year through GP Club. And it's a group bid, and Julie takes care of that.
I'm making motion that we accept the bid from Country Bear, but we have a month of sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars for sand for twenty-one, twenty-two year. Second? All in favor?
So who mixes the salt and sand, sorry?
That hasn't been determined yet. Last year, I believe that Jamie mixed it. Steve didn't direct me this year either way.
Okay.
Jamie said it's in his contract?
I think it is.
Yeah, it was kind of up in the air last year, and I think Jamie actually did it last year.
He did, and when I talked to him Monday, he said it was in his contract, that's why he did it.
Do we know the ratio that he's mixing it so that we're not putting too much salt down?
Is that specified in the contract?
Yes. And Steve made the specification with the recommendation according to standards. What I should define. We have a butter notification policy, it looks like that could take over. Where do we want to go?
I prepared an a butter notification policy based on the ordinance language that was proposed for town meeting. So that's why the copy of the original ordinance change number three is included in your packet. So I just took the language as proposed and transferred it to a short policy statement, saying that we would notify of others by certified mail.
And are we going to add that to the application of the planning board?
We could if that's...
I think we should, I think the town should get the cost of the butter notification.
It's in there that it's supposed to be.
Yeah, I mean, I...
It says in the ordinance that it's the cost of the applicant.
Yeah, I thought you meant that it would be on the application itself, but...
But how do we collect it, that it should kind of be on the...
It says right on the statement that it would be collected when we make application.
So just so everybody knows, this is all required. A butter notification shall be sent to all appropriate parties via certified mail. In turn, receive requested by town staff no less than fourteen days before any hearing. Notification fees shall be in accordance with the current town fees and penalty schedules and paid to the town by the applicant at the time of the application. All right, well, you guys have this one.
May I ask, what type of events...what type of event would get an a butter notification? What sort of projects would you get? It's probably a good question for Darlene, if you don't mind.
A subdivision, a site plan application. I believe it's also in the windmill and...
Appeals?
Appeals.
Definitely appeals.
Oh, yeah, we're just talking about the ordinance.
Yeah, I know, but she's not aware of the use.
Right, right, I don't know. I mean, in the ordinance, it's really those three things. It's mostly commercial development, so subdivision and commercial development. It's always been in there, people have to be notified. We just made it consistent because the language is a little different around the book and added the actual certified mail.
I move approval of the policy as presented. Second? All in favor?
Is there one that we need to sign?
Yes, you can sign my copy. Or actually, mine has holes in it, so if you would take one of your copies, that would probably be better.
Number four on the agenda, the community resilient climate information action.
The towns of Harpswell, Phippsburg, and West Bath are members of a cohort under the Governor's Office of Policy and Innovation to determine courses of action to address climate resilience. There is a grant that's associated with that program, and we've been meeting regularly to discuss possibilities of working together for improving our resilience for storm surge, sea level rise, and associated events. The total grant for the cohort is twenty-eight thousand dollars. So West Bath's portion would be about ninety-three hundred dollars. The question that's coming up at our next meeting is whether or not the three towns are interested in working together on some kind of a project. It could be shared engineering, it could be a shared hydrologic study for inundation at landings or roads, or other ways of working together to address that type of event. So the question is, just generally speaking, are you interested in working with the other towns? Or would you prefer to take our grant portion and use it towards our own project?
Well, do we have any projects that would benefit from a ninety...you know, I mean...
Yeah, I mean, it's a fairly nominal amount. So what I'm thinking during our discussions, one of the roads that came up was Austin Road, which we do not yet have a plan for. We have the engineering done for Birch Point, which is our next item to take care of. But we don't have a plan for Austin Road. So if I were to choose, I would probably take that grant money and put it toward engineering for that project.
Is that enough money to cover engineering for that project?
I believe so. Or it would be pretty close.
And what about the engineering? We've talked about the boat landing.
Boat landing, that's another option. And we don't necessarily need to decide on a project, but just trying to get a feel. What does your debt tell you? Do you want to try to partner with the other towns, or would you prefer to just handle our own project?
So what if we determine would be the pros and cons of going with the other two towns or not?
If we come up with sort of some sort of a joint agreement, like say we want to do a hydrologic study to see what kind of inundation we face at certain points in town. If we go in that together and the cost exceeds twenty-eight thousand dollars, we would probably have more leverage if we were joining with other people, if we were to go for additional money. If you're not concerned about that and you would rather have control over your own project, then that's an option too.
But is a hydrologic study going to be equally beneficial to all the parties involved? You know, if there's a project, how do you then determine that path?
Right. There's some work to come, the consensus around that.
You know, it's not that...I certainly want to make sure that West Bath gets their fair share in an agreement from that, and I don't know how you manage that. If you do a group effort and then the project falls, I'll say off-site of the town.
And the three towns have similar concerns, but they're certainly not the same.
I...David has something.
I personally would prefer to see us work together. We're all part of the same watershed, and our tides rise at the same time. And I think that's one of my major concerns. I think working together is smart because of that leverage piece. Granters always like to see regional approaches.
Yeah, they do. And that's sort of what this program is really about.
David, do you have...
A couple of things. I think we would get more possible grant money down the road. As Valen said, if we were combined as a unit, we'd carry more weight applying for other grants. Second question is, has the road commission had a chance to look at Austin Road too much? I don't think there's a very elaborate engineering site for that road.
Maybe not, and he hasn't looked at it recently. And I'm not sure what kind of dollar figures we're looking at.
I don't know, is it...this engine, it's a pretty flat road, it's...
It depends how much the project costs.
Yeah, over twenty thousand, right?
Yeah. Because if it's over a certain amount, we're required to have engineering.
Correct, it may not be that high, I'm not sure. If you work out with Steve, what he thinks it might cost to raise that road up and put a bigger cupboard in there.
And are there other...does Phippsburg and Harpswell have other public landings that are also affected by the tidal influence?
They both do.
So I mean, yeah, that could be...
They both mentioned issues around that with wharves and piers.
Because if you go at it from that project...
Right.
And then so you have a group effort on landings and wharves and how to manage it, that could be a collective unit as well.
And then we were discussing the issue at our last meeting. I think it was easiest for everybody to wrap their head around regional engineering, that sort of thing. It's just easy to understand, so... As long as the projects that we're looking at are similar, I think we can come to an agreement on pooling our money and leveraging the funds.
Do we have to decide this now?
No.
Okay.
We just wanted to get a feel for it before we go into our next meeting. I don't think we'll be making any decisions about actual projects until October. So it'll be a while. But I'll have more information after our next meeting.
When's your next meeting?
September ninth, I think.
So you want to put this back on the agenda for the next swap meeting?
Yeah.
So I got a quick question. So is the reason to go joint with the adjacent towns to be able to get more grant money later with the hydrological survey? I'm just curious on what's the reason, what's the benefit to the town for that particular survey for what we have planned in the future?
The benefit is if the three towns decide on a project or some kind of study that we want to undertake together, and the cost exceeds the twenty-eight thousand dollars that we're going to receive, then there's other pots of money, other funding available to fill in the gaps. And when towns undertake a regional project rather than going it alone, the scoring on the grants is better than if it's just one town applying.
Got it, okay.
But I guess I would add to that what...anyone can, I'm sorry. What regional project would we do? Is the question, what possibly would we do for a regional project?
That would be beneficial to the town.
That would be beneficial to our town, that's my question.
Right, and that's a question that we're contemplating right now. You know, is it enough to say, you know, let's go in on engineering together to address shoreline erosion or other issues? To do hydrologic studies or, you know, what have you, whatever it might be.
Or engineering on public landing development. Because if the town has a public landing, we all have one that needs an issue. Is there a way to then go at it from that perspective?
Right.
On how to, you know, make it last longer? Or, you know, what can they do so that each community will collect and go after public landing engineering? It still comes back to each town as a benefit for their own individual strategies.
Right.
And that's kind of where I'd like to see us. From my point, I think that way we each get a benefit from a community and an individual. And that's what I'd like to see. David?
Unfortunately, we have no comp plan that is accepted by the state meeting now. So if we apply for a grant, on some grants, our points would be lower automatically.
Right. And we're not the only ones in that vote, because it turns out Phippsburg is...
Yeah, so I think if we apply...
I'm assuming it too.
A little more point system, we're getting points if you apply as a region. We're even the bottom of the list, we have no comp plan.
But I'm not saying not go at it as a region, but if there's a project that we could collectively go after that we all individually benefit from...
Yeah, I'm just stating the fact that we have no technical comp plan, so we're already down the list and being accepted by grant.
And the whole idea of working together is that is that we would in fact be working on similar projects that would be covered by the same sorts of funding, which certainly allows the three towns to have more... In the world of money, ten thousand dollars is like nothing. In the world of projects, ten thousand dollars isn't much. So we're better off, I think. And working with the other towns, if we find that we cannot agree on anything amongst the three of us, we can separate them, but initially, it seems to me that the idea of working together makes sense.
But I...let's see where you guys come from your next meeting.
Okay. I'll see what ideas come up. The town of Harpswell, they actually have the most capacity with personnel.
Yes.
They have a planner. And they also receive a favorable rate on engineering services. So they're doing some homework to see if that rate can apply if they go regional on engineering services. So we should have some more information later in the... And I think Max is here.
Am I on the agenda right now, or...
Yeah, he can come up to the table if he would.
Are you...I don't know if I did.
Do you have a copy for Max?
And this is Max Johnstone from Midcoast Economic Development District.
Hello.
Welcome.
Should I just start, or...
Yeah, okay.
Hello, oh yes, I'm Max Johnstone, Midcoast Economic Development District, with your senior planner.
Could you speak up, please?
I'm sorry, I'm Max Johnstone. I'm the senior planning consultant with the Midcoast Economic Development District. A few months ago, Bill Maypower was talking with the town of West Bath regarding some planning services to assist with the comprehensive plan. Bill unfortunately retired.
Would it work if he sat to the side a little bit?
Yeah, next to Carley maybe.
Sure.
Between the mask and the...
Yeah, what is it?
Sorry, Max.
All right.
Just move you around, next I'd be a little closer.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right.
Perfect.
Here we go.
Thank you.
Shall I start from the top?
No.
Yes.
We know you're back, you can...
I'm Max, I'm with the Midcoast Economic Development District. A few months ago, Bill Maypower, our former executive director, was speaking with the town of West Bath to work on planning services, primarily the comprehensive plan work. Bill unfortunately retired back in the beginning of July this year. So he then gave me the work, and I'm just following up with West Bath to see if this is still something that is...that you are proceeding with, your comprehensive plan, and if you do need consultation work for that. With McKed, we usually take eighteen months to work with the town from start to finish with their comprehensive plan. We try to work best as moderators with the community to make sure that it's your vision for the comprehensive plan, not our own force vision. And that's pretty much it when it comes to me pitching the comprehensive plan. So this is a document that we hope will be used in future grant applications and other regional projects you're planning on doing either with the state or federal or other grant administrative programs, and that's all I really have.
So what other towns like us have you worked on with their comprehensive plan?
So McKed can work with... So McKed has worked with other towns from Harpswell and Brunswick and Cumberland to any town in Sagahaw County, Lincoln County, Knox County, and Lincolnville, Belmont, and a few others in Waldo County. Trying to think of the most recent ones. Phippsburg, I believe, was the one that we just recently helped with. I started out with Walda Borough, and we've also done reviews for Topson. I just did one for Georgetown as well, helping with their review. In addition to West Bath, we just signed a contract for Appleton, and I believe Washington, and Knox County, we're helping them with theirs. I think that's the ones just off the top of my head.
There's a little bit more similar inside in scope. Certainly Phippsburg.
Yeah, probably Phippsburg would be the most...
Brunswick is twice it large.
Appleton's not too big.
Yeah, Appleton's pretty small, but not coastal.
They get them, small and coastal.
How many of those reviews were successful?
Oh, in Newcastle, I should have also mentioned Newcastle. All are successful. We usually are able to have a very good communication with the state. I can't think of one where we've been denied for any reason. The state always gives us suggestions to address it, but that's always incorporated in the eighteen-month plan. I always do envision a one, two-month, just in case there's someone brand new into the state who wants to put in some ideas they want to do, and it's usually more technical items that we're just addressing. They might just...it's just a third perspective of them looking at and saying, "Oh, can you just make this little grammatical change?" And that's it, we never really get denied for anything.
So the approval process is twofold then. The state has to approve it, and our town meeting would have to approve it.
Correct.
And then it's acceptable, and we begin to build our programming around what the town has decided it chooses to do.
Correct.
In terms of growth or not growth, or those kinds of things?
The comprehensive plan is more of a guiding document. Everything is not going to be set in stone.
Right.
Obviously, something might change next year. Last year is an example of that, where we all don't anticipate everything. But Newcastle, the reason I brought them up was because we actually just signed them on as a member so I could help them with their comprehensive plan. They brought in a consulting firm, not us, from out of state, who did their comprehensive plan, did their land use ordinance, and it's caused a bit of an issue. So this, back in June, they brought me in to help just get them past the finish line, essentially. So it is a twofold process. We want to make sure everyone in the town likes it, and then we want to make sure everyone in the state likes it.
Probably everyone in town isn't going to like the same thing, but as many as possible.
And that's why I like to be a moderator. And that's why we want to make sure there's a diverse group that's on my comprehensive plan committee. Because you're right, not everyone's going to love everything, but we do want to make sure that we have a well-done, negotiated one so we can at least get people to...
Don't I have a question?
I was about to say.
Yeah, thank you. Well, this is really for the selectmen. Originally, you spoke of MCD helping with not only the comprehensive plan, but also the land ordinances, and all that I see in this document is comprehensive plan. So has that changed? Last I heard, we do them together or at the same time?
The last contract included both components. If the board decides to have McKed help with the land use ordinance, that would probably be a separate agreement.
Yep, it can be a separate agreement, or we can amend this one if we prefer.
So what is the price differential to have that included? Because I think last, the same price was...
It was six thousand dollars in the original agreement, so this agreement is four. So I'm assuming it might be two thousand... assuming it might be two thousand for the land use.
Does that jive with what you're thinking?
I'd have to take a look at the West Bath land use ordinance and know a bit more. As I said, Bill was the one who was mostly talking with the town, so when he said, talk to West Bath about the land use, uh, not land use, the comprehensive plan, that's what I was more focused on, I didn't know about the land use until that question.
Okay.
Yeah, do you start with a quote-unquote boilerplate comprehensive plan that we could see a copy of? Is that what you begin with?
So we like to look at the town's most recent comprehensive plan, we like to see what the vision was for that back then, and we like to see what the committee says of it at that time. So I don't know what the most recent comprehensive plan was.
Two thousand and five, correct. So would it be, would you come at it as essentially an update of that plan? Or just using that plan as a jumping off point and creating a new plan? Or is it, you know, kind of the town decides?
Again, it's, it's a big town decision. I'm, I'm always a fan of the amendments process, especially if there's a lot of ideas that the town had originally that just some things sort of hit that wall, they can't get it. But some towns do want to do the amendments, some towns want to just push everything off and they want to start doing it. I weigh as acceptable.
And if we, if we don't have a committee willing to step up to take this on, how do you manage that?
We have to aggressively market it. We, we have to get some people involved. I know some, I know it's going to be a bit of a stretch, but we do like to get people involved in this.
Can it be done with a, with a kind of overarching committee and various task force? Because not everybody's interested in every aspect. But some people are very interested in one area, so can that be split up into different areas of interest?
That's a common practice that some towns do, yes. And, but, don't know, I always thought, did he have a stand-up just to make a call?
I, I wanted to piggyback on Mr. Perris's question, he asked something along the lines of, do you have a template or an example or, or something? I'll piggybacking on his question. In my experience, when consultants are going to offer assistance, they have like a show and tell kind of thing. I, I looked through this and, for instance, you'll say, here's, here's what a plan might look like, here's what a schedule might look like, here's what the deliverables might look like. Based on your town meeting, here's what the schedule and deliverables look like, and here's what our schedule looks like, and with this being August, we're way ahead of the mall game, or with this being August, we're way behind the mall game. I don't have any feel for any of that.
On the, on the, the file, there's a, a schedule of when things would be done.
The meeting would have, the schedule will have to be updated, obviously.
Oh, we're, we're kind of on track at this point. And this is our kickoff meeting.
Are these deliverables, I mean, like fourth one down, transportation inventory section, is that a deliverable? Is that something that is a printed document that is provided? Or what are, what are the deliverables? I see tasks, but I don't see deliverables.
My understanding is that when we're going through this process of the committee's schedule, we would actually be comparing these sections to the previous comprehensive plan and see what still applies and what doesn't fit anymore. That's generally how towns go through the process.
So he has no deliverables?
I wouldn't say that.
Well, I'd be getting the inventory items from the state.
Right.
And I've already submitted the request, so, which means if you don't want me, like, you're still going to get your, your items from these task forces.
Right.
Well, I, I would just like to remind us all that we tried this a couple of years ago and we stalled because we did not have consultation. And because of the situation that was currently in force in state government, the opportunity for consultation was just about nil. So now we have the opportunity for consultation, it seems to me that having somebody who knows this process inside and out is going to be to our benefit rather than to our detriment. The deliverables are somebody who knows what they're doing and how this gets done in accordance with both the state, the state, what the state requires of a comprehensive plan is pages long. And to have somebody who knows how to dig for the information is in itself invaluable. So I, I think the idea of having a consultant who's actually day-to-day conversant with these things will be invaluable to us.
So Maxwell, you, these tasks that you have here, these are sections that are coming from the state to help direct us down a path, is that what you're saying? These items in the back page?
Right, some of these are some sections that the inventory comes from the state. Some of it's stuff that I'll be working with the town office to acquire some of that information and just have it all centralized into one document.
And then should, you know, it was our understanding that we were going to have our ordinance incorporated into this, the land use ordinances? Help acquiring that spectrum.
The ordinances would be incorporated into the comprehensive plan.
Maybe, yeah, two separate codes.
Consulting agreement. Are you fluent in ordinance as well, are you?
Yep, I'm working on that with Waldeboro right now as well. So I'm trying to do that. Again, I'd have to see the ordinance just to, and probably talk a little bit more about what that's going to entail.
Okay.
One of the problems we had in the past with developing a comprehensive plan, in addition to a perhaps an overall committee, there were subgroups, which I think has been referred to a few moments ago. The problem was those subgroups had their own particular interests and pet projects, and they put into the comprehensive plans things which were impossible for the town to do and which the town could not afford. I think one of the major ones of that was to develop a waterfront park. And to develop a waterfront park, you'd have to buy up a whole bunch of waterfront land, tear down houses, change the zoning, et cetera. So my concern going forward is if there are these little subgroups, who keeps them under control?
We do.
Yeah, we do. It's not really, it's the, it's the consultant's job, and correct me if I'm off-base here, but I believe it's a consultant's job to moderate and sort of bring everybody together. And it's really the town's responsibility to come up with a plan that works for the town. And Max would help us with that.
And in addition, if I might jump on there, I'm also sort of a middleman, I guess, to make sure that the select for town administration doesn't have to worry too much about this. I can certainly go and say, hey, this, this group wants to have a five-story condo right on the water. Am I missing something or is that actually possible? And if, and if it's a similar concern you're talking about, it'll probably be pointed out as something that's not possible and should be avoided. And then I'll have that addressed and say, look, if you're going to put that in there, tell me realistically how you're going to achieve that without the town going out its way, and then the person would have to address that. Although I, and I'll move on.
David, I think it was nice.
The, I share Jay's concerns. There were some things, in my opinion, there were some things in last comp plan that didn't make any sense at all. And it came down to the finish line, and I think the comp plan was kind of pushed through because it needed the comp plan. And so we've got to go slow enough. And it takes more than deadline, it takes more than deadline with twenty-three town meeting. So you've got to be careful how fast you go and really look, if you compare the last comp plan going forward. There were several things to toss and out of that. You've got to keep it realistic. That was totally out of bounds in the last comp plan in many ways. And it was passed because we needed a comp plan.
So is there a way to, I guess, veto sections of a comp plan? You know, if we, if we have a comp plan that's put together and you present it to the town, do you, you know, if David says, you know, this section where this waterfront park is, how do we remove that?
The committee would remove it. And the, the town.
But so that, because see, if we, if that same committee comes back into play.
I don't think it will.
Is it voted on at an open town meeting?
No, it won't.
It would be voted on at whatever style town meeting we have, the annual town meeting, so it would be.
So it would be open for discussion, but.
It would be open for discussion, but it would be complete before it gets to the town meeting. So it's really the committee and the board and other town officials who are involved would need to come to some kind of consensus about what plan would be presented to our legislative body.
So we have, we have a public hearing set for November and, and the draft plan, a public hearing in December. So I presume that's sufficient time to make edits if people aren't for a section?
And between December, and it says December twenty.
So next December, a year from this December.
Yeah, and then the next time would be the town meeting in June twenty-twenty-three.
So it's six months of, I mean, I just.
Yeah.
And there would be many public meetings that hopefully will be well-attended and, and adjustments would be made during that time.
So that's, whereas, so if there's a, an edit that needs to be made to a proposed plan.
Right.
There's time to do it at a town public hearing, yes?
Yes.
Really.
Do you consider current ordinances that are on the books already? And how do you coordinate or utilize or address the planning board itself?
For, for the ordinance changes, or?
No, for the comprehensive plan.
Oh, we do take into account the town's current ordinance is.
Could you repeat that, I couldn't hear you?
We do take into account the town's current ordinance. Usually when we're working on something like natural resources or environmental protection-related items, we'll take a look at what the ordinance currently is at and we can make recommendations based around that. So, for example, timber harvesting was something that's come up recently because the states changed their rules on that, where you can either, does it make the state to be the one to handle those rules? If the town has their own staff member, they can do it. Or a third option where someone from the town do it, but with someone from the state. Some towns never incorporate that into their ordinance, so we just said the future ordinance does need to address that type of thing. So if there's something that the ordinance doesn't have that's now state regulation, we point that out. If there's something about pollutants and addressing an important part of town, we'd probably say maybe the future ordinance should have something around that area for environmental protection. But again, as I said, it's not a guarantee thing, it's more of a suggestion that's made for future occasions.
So with that being said, would it be advisable to coordinate reviewing the ordinances at the same time review of the comp plan?
Yep, we can do that.
Does it make more sense to do them both together or do one before the other? Is, is one way easier than the other?
It can be done, it can be done parallel, where if I'm making a suggestion to say the ordinance should have this in place, well, I might as well just tell the planning board or the land use committee, whoever is going to be responsible for amending that, this is something that should be in your next amendment, your, your next ordinance. And same thing if one of the recommendations in the comprehensive plan is talking about how maybe the planning board or, or the enforcement officer process for getting these site plans approved. If it's some, if it's complicated, for example, that probably is going to be a recommendation of the comprehensive plan to simplify that ordinance as we're simplifying the ordinance.
Okay.
I, I would suggest that, why don't we have as simple a comprehensive plan as we could, but the first draft of it could be developed to be consistent with our present ordinances. And then if the people looking at the comp plan find there are some things that raise a question with this draft comp plan that's totally compatible with the present ordinances, then those things could be addressed in a more meaningful thing. We've had, for, you know, I'm just bringing random things out here, but, you know, the state planning office wanted to have a mining thing put into our document, I think it was like forty pages long. I remember standing up in front of the town meeting and saying, we are totally ignoring this, but if you find gold on your property, come to the planning board and we will write a section next year that can let you get at your gold, you know? And so we have responded as far as possible to meet the interests of the citizens of West Bath. And some of the things, to be quite frank, and, you know, Dave can back me up on this, or if you may have seen it happen, we just ignored some aspects of the comp plan that, in terms of writing our ordinances, that seemed ridiculous. So we don't want to be in that place again.
And one of my concerns is the last few years, there's been a lot of pressure on the planning board to go through the ordinance and find things that don't match up. Whether it's grammar, or the wording is here, sometimes also different from the same subject. That's what I believe, that she'd have at the same time, so a different set of eyes to look at the ordinance and kind of rewrite it, just sort of makes more sense. It takes some of the pressure to play for, which every year come back with even housekeeping rules, the states. So I, I would vote the board authorize at some point shortly to combine both of these efforts.
So how, I guess to tag along with what David's saying, how detailed do you get into the planning board ordinances? I know two meetings ago, we were missing a comma in an element which could actually completely alter the definition of, or the purpose of the ordinance. So how detailed do you get into those ordinance reviews? To ensure that we're meeting our legal protection as a town, but also that we're saying it properly?
Well, I'd like to go through with the planning board, make sure the people who are going through it now, so that once I'm not here, the people who are responsible for interpreting, oh, well, the planning board and the board appeals or the zoning board, I don't know what, what's that called. I'd like to go through it with members from those two groups because they're the ones who are important right now, because they're the ones interpreting it. And I want them to be sure that what the town is going to create, what I'm helping with, is something they do understand. So in terms of how detailed I'll be.
I guess, who manages that final document? I know, I'm assuming it's Sally.
Yep.
When it's done.
Yes, it would get to the attorney.
So, but who, who ensures that we, do you, do you go through with a fine-tooth comb and, and say, that doesn't quite jive, or is that up to the planning board to set the tone of that message?
In the past, I, it's similar to what the draft schedule is for the comprehensive plan. Go through section by section, read it over, and just see if there's any issues.
Would you, would you work with the planning board initially to just go through and say some of the things that seem to be contradictory and not quite written in a way that is intended? Would you work with the board to get a sense of what is intended by the current?
I do mind.
By the current language. Do your best.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to talk to the planning board early, see if there's some glaring issue they have immediately. Uh, like, you just, you pointed out the, uh, comma, I'd like to see where that is in the ordinance and I can really hone in on that one. Um, and if there's other ones that people have recognized in the ordinance, uh, I certainly would like to be, having that pointed out at first so that I can keep an eye out for that, for any other contradictory parts in the rest of the ordinance.
Well, because it seems to me that any ordinance should be, um, clearly understandable and enforceable so that initially we could just read it and know what it says, more or less. So if we can, if we can get both the comprehensive plan and the ordinances so that an ordinary person can read and pretty much understand without needing interpretation, that would be an awesome thing.
That may not be achievable in a legal document.
I was about to say, there's, there's legal means that you have to, that's how it's written.
Right, but generally speaking.
I do know what you mean.
Documents should be readable by an ordinary person. And then attorneys will make claims. We understand that.
We're trying to avoid the attorneys making claims.
Well, I don't know that there's a way of avoiding that altogether, but having things that are as clearly written as possible is one of them.
I want to make sure that your planning board and board appeals have the same interpretation that the town's attorney would. So that when the board, when either board is making their decision, they do have, there'd be one attorney who read the document and said, "I agree with that interpretation."
Right.
The one that's going to defend me.
That's the one we really want to be on our side.
So I, um, I'd like to move that we add the planning ordinance, um, planning board ordinance to this strategy.
How much time do you envision needing of planning board members or people? How much time is it going to take for people to devote to this process?
To the ordinance, to comprehensive plan, or both?
You can do them separately, I mean, it is.
Right. I like to usually do a two-hour meeting once a month in the beginning. That's usually a nice, um, pace. If we're under a deadline, I'll try and get two meetings done a month. Um, I mean, with the draft schedule we have, we should have a nice buffer between what's planned as the last public hearings versus the June meeting. I don't know usually your, I assume the deadline's like maybe April to have it put on a ballot or.
If it's open town meeting.
Something like this should be open town meeting.
No, but no time at a time, what is the timing for that?
Right, I'm, I'm open to it.
Well, if it's a special town meeting, we only need a couple of weeks to call it.
Yeah. But if we do it at a regular.
So if you back into June.
Annual town meeting.
Right.
Maybe the same timeline, a couple of weeks?
Yeah. I mean, we typically prepare for that ahead of time anyway, so it's, it's not as if it would be a surprise that we're having our regular town meeting and did all of the hearings well ahead of time. We follow the same as the land use ordinance where two weeks prior you have the final, final hearing.
Is, is there motion for now?
No.
Suzanne, I'm hoping that we add the planning board ordinance to the strategy.
I'm hoping that we add the two thou, well, approximately two thousand dollars, I think it's going to be close to that?
I, I'll get, I'll get a final figure out if you want to discuss it again.
Yeah, I, I have a question relative to your question, Suzanne. I see this is a fixed price, no matter how long it goes on for, if you have to extend it, it's four thousand dollars, it's a fixed price. Is that correct?
For the eighteen-month contract, with the extension, that's going to talk about, and I can make that clear if we refer in turn, but we want to see where we're at. If eighteen months go by and we have nothing in the comp plan, I assume you won't, we won't want us anymore, I assume we'll want to terminate. Um, but if like eighteen months go by and we just need to wait, we just, we have a complete plan, maybe something, there was a section people didn't like, and we need to just move to the next meeting, there won't be an extra charge on that. But it's, it's an extension assuming there is a, a visible end, so.
That's why I'm looking for deliverables.
So, um, come from the government, so, having dealt.
This is the government.
I mean, having dealt with contracts ourselves, you know, in our prior government jobs. So, um, what was this four thousand dollars based on? Did you, have you looked at, have you had a chance to examine the prior comprehensive plan from two thousand five and the work that was done a few years ago when they tried to do one, uh, come up with a plan? So did you look, do you look at those things when you come up with a price? I just wonder if the price is practical for what you may have to undertake. I just want to make sure we're, we're in good shape, the town's going to be in good shape, or this, this isn't like a lot of money. It's, it's okay with me, but.
That's, no, that's a fair point. That price is based on just anticipated hours of work we're expecting. Eighteen months, I said we would do maybe a two-hour meeting once a month, so thirty-six hours right there. And that's just for the basic moderation. The remaining sixty-four is just, uh, myself or Hannah Sisk, who I mentioned as one of the staff members, um, us working on the comp plan outside of work, outside of the regular meetings, making the edits, getting any verification from the state governments or from the select boards, um, addressing any questions from a member who have one, because we get those quite a lot. In the land use ordinance, just going over it time and time again. Same thing with the comp plan, we go through it, go through it, dramatic change it, dramatic errors. Uh, so that's pretty much, that's pretty much us. We anticipate, I, I, I'd put a hundred, just to be safe, thirty-six hours from the town meetings. And then, just in case there's going to be more, like I said, like as I said, when we get closer to the end, that's when I might push to have like two meetings a month and then we add in a few more hours there. It's, if it doesn't happen, then it'll just be more time to talk about the issue.
I'm reluctant to authorize anything until we see the second part of the, of the ordinance as of the year. Can we, can we revisit this in, at, at our September twenty-third meeting with an updated?
I can make sure those edits are in there.
Okay.
And you're looking for a combined contract for both?
Well, they're going to go hand in hand. I mean, you know, there, there's half these items, I think, some of these ordinances are going to fall into the comp plan. Um, so it makes sense to have it evaluated at the same time. Instead of taking seventeen of the ordinances out because they're in the comp plan and then not addressing the other numbers, um, doesn't seem like we're doing a whole complete project. I think we should do it all properly once.
And you can both done, or just having a comp plan, or having a ordinance.
Or having part of it, I, I think it's, I mean, we, we're struggling now, um, and I want to thank the planning board for the efforts they've done so far, um, and going back to the zoning board again. So I think it's, this is a way to complete it, um, for the town and, and have it all done. Um, and make sure that we're all protected as a town, that's very important.
I have a question for Max, actually. Um, as far as the comprehensive plan, are you doing the meeting facilitating and the actual revision work? When you do ordinances, are you facilitating meetings and proposing what should be changed? Are you also doing the revision work for the ordinances?
Right. Facilitating the meetings, and then I suppose I'm, I'm doing the revisions where I'm making the edits. I go through the articles, if I see something that's an issue, I'll highlight it and say, "This doesn't make sense," and then point out to whoever's going to be reviewing it, whether it's a designated committee.
You have a planning board.
Or, okay, or the planning board. I don't, I didn't know.
Yeah, no, it's okay.
Um, some, sometimes there's too much work for a planning board and so they want the land use side to go to a separate committee, so I didn't know in this case.
Right. So you actually write the language for the ordinance?
The updated language, and then present to the planning board, go through, I like to go through the articles one at a time and say, "This is what I thought was weird." I like to read through it with them, and if there's a, one part where there seems to be conflicting interpretation, that's when we'll talk about it. And then I'll make sure it's highlighted so that I'll review it behind this, review it, uh, outside the meeting. And then at the next meeting, when we go back to the issue, I'll point out, "That's the one everyone had an issue with, this is the new language, does this make it a bit more sense to me?"
Yeah, we're just trying to figure out the level of effort and if it would be kind of taken care of the same way as the comp plan.
Look at the, the, the.
Yeah, I think so, I guess.
So you look through the plan and you see a paragraph and you say, "This is what I think looks weird." And so you talk to the committee and you guys hash it out. That sounds fine. I think what we're looking for though is something that will withstand legal scrutiny.
Are you talking about the comprehensive plan or are you talking about the land ordinances? Because they're two totally different things.
Oh, I understand that.
Yeah, that's why I'm talking about two different things.
What we're holding out for is that the language would be proposed, the changes be proposed, and before they are presented to the town meeting for acceptance, then that would go through the attorney for her legal opinion. And I'm sure she consults with the other people in her office and all of those things happen so that, so that we're not sitting, making up rules that may not be enforceable.
Yeah, so what our concern is, is our current plans, the one in plan two, don't withstand legal scrutiny and he will help us make sure that what we come up with withstands legal scrutiny.
We don't know if they need it or not, we're going to make sure that it does.
Yes.
And we, we may have some language that is sufficient.
Yeah, I was looking for, yes, that's all.
Everything in the land ordinance has never gone to a meeting without being reviewed by a lawyer. Whether it was written back in nineteen seventy-two and still isn't good language or not, I don't know.
Right.
At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I would recommend somewhat strongly from my personal point of view is that, uh, these people study our present comp plan, but then, keeping that in mind, develop a proposed comp plan that is one hundred percent consistent with our present ordinance and then alert us to where there are places where there are potential conflicts with what the state planning office wants, et cetera, et cetera. I think what's being proposed now with a dual program is more than can be done, but I may be all with it.
So I agree.
Well, I, I think if we try to make it simple, Jen, and based on that, it can be done. And I don't think, we have to concentrate so much on the twenty twenty-three town meeting because we could call a special town meeting two months later and just deal with these issues. And that may be the simplest way in law order, separate the two meetings from the budget to this comp planning board.
Who knows, we may get done early.
Yeah, yeah, but yes, if it comes to that point, we could certainly do that.
So I, I, I vote for making it as simple as we can and as straightforward.
And that'll give us a framework for future growth. I think David's right.
Yeah, so that's what we really, yeah, this comp plan is really a growth management plan.
We also want, we, we don't want to be in this position ten years from now or, or beyond when now we're going to miss grants again because we are so behind the goal. And we've got components to the comp plan that are so high in the sky right now that we need to put forth something for the community that grows with us and keeps us on track for future grant money that we're not pinched in this predicament where we are right now, um, not meeting some of our opportunities. You look like you want to say something.
I agree totally with you. So if we have an eighteen-month plan, but we don't want to miss out on grant money, do we want to put this thing in high gear and have it ready for next June?
The reason we can't put it in high gear is, again, time commitment, not everybody has the time commitment. I think what we're asking of individuals is a lot, so we don't want them to get so stressed out they throw their hands up and they say, "I'm done," and then we, we're stuck without a plan again.
Well, if we miss out on a one hundred thousand dollar grant, would it be worse throwing ten grand at it? Getting the paperwork.
I think it's too premature to evaluate the timeline until we take a look at the big picture.
And we don't have enough committee members.
And you can't do so many at something and make it happen.
I, I just say, I think that we, we, we know there's things that have to come out to make us more realistic, but there are many things that have to go in also. But I think it's, I, I, I think we have, it appears to be a reasonable time, a reasonable timeline. But like David said, if we miss that and hold a special meeting, terrific. We will find a way to pull this together in the best timeline that suits the endpoint.
I guess my question is, do you think between now and twenty-third, next meeting?
June.
Twenty-third.
Oh, the next, September meeting, yeah.
We have a chance to read the ordinance, I'll go ask for the ordinances in the comp plan, say, "Yeah, is it doable, timeframe or whatever?"
Between now and the next meeting on twenty-thirty, I have enough time.
Just not the culture record, just an idea of what you, what your thoughts are on the current comp plan.
Where we sit.
Yeah, yeah, I, I have enough, if you don't mind, is it available online or?
They are, they are. They are on our website.
Okay, so I'll take a look at them tomorrow.
So I guess I would say let's wait and see what you come up with next meeting and go from there.
And I just want to say, in order to make this work, we do need people to be part of this, Mike.
Very, very important.
If you would be part of this process, or have others in the town that would like to be part of this process, it is not going to work if we can't get people to be part of this process.
Even if you only take a section that's near and dear to your heart and find, Jeremy, you can take a section?
I think Jeremy can take two sections, didn't he?
Oh, he's a, he is an overachiever.
Sure, I'd take one of my sections.
Yeah, I'd say I'll, I'll hate on Mike's.
Our Hahn's hearing, others probably work, is there, is there a better tradition?
But I think as you, we probably need to take the lead in recruiting people ourselves as the select.
I just try. Okay, I think that's her one. I got, I got Jeremy, you know?
Um, but I mean, we also need to make sure that we have a good cross-section of ages and interests and, you know. Yes and no, I can. And ultimately, the people who say yes are going to be the people who make the decisions, so. And, but.
Have a bigger.
But invitations help.
Basically, overall support the town is showing tonight, uh, I'll sign up for it.
Yeah, thank you, David.
Which part? Well, all of you, I think, yeah, that was all.
I'll be the person who directs which parts people take.
That means you're involving all of it.
I'm hoping that when the townspeople see that we have a plan and we have some support, um, I think more people would be comfortable in at least being involved in different sections and.
Well, we did people share that at a previous meeting, and as long as this wasn't just another, um, gathering of information and was moving forward, they simply would hop on board. So I think that we have people.
Something else on the website, just letting people know that we're, we're moving forward.
And one thing to keep in mind, this is a so-called moving doctrine. We can adjust it two years, five years, seven years from now, we can always adjust it as a town. It's not guaranteed that ten years, you can't change it, we can change it.
Let me ask a little question with that. Let's say we do update this document to use from now.
The comprehensive plan, that's my favorite.
Comprehensive plan, um, does that start our new ten-year timeline? If we submit an updated document, do we start fresh? If we submit an updated document, do we start fresh at that point 10 years to the next due date?
It's accepted.
No, 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 hold that thought. You, so if we update something that's accepted, let's say we, we get a comp plan and we edit it two years from now, and then we submit it, do we start a new 10-year timeline?
Oh, so you're saying, two years after the, fuck?
We, we make it edit.
Yeah.
2025.
We accept it in 2023, we amend it in 2025.
We get 10 years from then.
Does that start the clock ticking again?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
No, because we have, that, because that's not a comprehensive.
It is a comprehensive. We've changed it, but we can't stay.
It's your wish to get more emissions.
I absolutely can, I'm a genie bottle.
A comprehensive plan has to be comprehensive, not peaceful.
One section at a time.
You know, the whole plan went going up. I'm just, I'm just curious, I was, I like where David was going with it.
I wasn't so quite that.
But it keeps us on track, okay, but it keeps us on track for grants consistently.
I think, I think we can hold off on that aspect and see what happens.
Let, let's get this one out of her.
Yes.
Before, before we amend it.
Yeah, I think, I mean, somewhat to answer your question, I think it's going to be how the state will look at it, because if you take one sentence and just put in a new column, for example, they're probably going to say, no, this isn't a new comp plan we're doing. But if you take out all the sections and redo it, then.
We change the column and each section.
Right? No, we put a period, a comma, and a period.
I already asked Tom about that at the state, and he was like, not going to fly, forget it, not even looking at it.
Making the one comma, maybe the one comma addition, yeah.
Well, because, because to, to do that really defeats the whole purpose of why they cast the law to require in towns to do this anyway. So it's always good to try to follow the law whenever possible, and who knows in 10 years, I'm 95 maybe very early.
So we, have you officially decided?
Have, shall we officially decide to?
To move it to the 23rd?
To present us with a new letter of understanding, I think it's called, that includes working with the town on the land use ordinances. And that's, that's a motion, perhaps? Or we'll all just say yes.
I second it, yes. So you, so you'll take a look at our comp plan and our ordinance and come back and give us a tertiary review of what you think?
I will look at both documents, I'll bother you sometime just to get your thoughts on it. If anyone on the select board or planning board or other group would like to get my email out to the meetings so that they can send their personal thoughts, I'm more than happy to do so.
And, and that includes an updated proposed contract?
This contract, yes.
So that, so that we can talk about the?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make update to this and.
Okay.
We'll send my emails.
When, when is that next meeting? 23rd.
I probably should, I won't even try to meet again.
That'll be interesting. Three weeks from now.
Yep, fourth of January.
I was reading something on it, remember it is? Dangerous.
Okay, there was a motion to second?
I second it.
We all said yes. We all said yes, okay. Just want to make sure, for the record of this. Any other questions for Max before?
Thank you, Max.
I might have a comment, not necessarily a question.
Okay.
Certainly, your agreement will be between them, I'm just an interested citizen, but as an interested citizen, looking at the work plan tasks, you, let's just arbitrarily talk about tasks two, three, and four. Task two says to provide a participation strategy. I'd like next time when you come to say, here's what a participation strategy looks like, and here's when it would be implemented. Item number three says, develop a strategy to engage specific groups. I'd like you to say, here's a strategy that we developed for Bodenham, and here's how we would implement that. Item number four says, develop with the committee a process. I'd like you to say, throw it on the table, here's a process that we've used successfully in the past, and here's how it would be implemented. This would be the due date and this is when it would be implemented. Right now, you don't have any show and tell along with you, so me as a citizen, I don't really understand what it is that you're going to do.
Well, it may help us get committee members, if we have a, a roadmap to entice them.
So I'm just taking your items listed here on the work plan task, I'd just like to see what they look like.
We can use past, you know?
Yeah, bring things in from what you've done in the past, not what you would do for us per se, here's, here's what we did on this process in the past.
That'll help us understand, if you can do that, I think it'd help with understanding, absolutely.
Yeah, what are you going to do for us, not you?
You call that the lift, what's in it for me?
So what, is it so what, so what, so what? What's the so what? I'm not a candidate.
Thank you, that's helpful.
I agree, I think it's a good example, samples of word of words.
Yeah, show and tell, I mean, show and tell, show me, show me.
And if you, and if you died with, you know, a small community, coastal community, that's equally interesting.
I'm not looking for you to do any work, just pull it off the shelf.
All right, thank you, Max.
Thanks, Max. Are you available on the 23rd? We'll be here.
Same time, same place.
Same bat channel.
Sticking around for the rest of the.
Okay. When you want it. We're going to start reading that ordinance. Thank you for giving ourselves.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Town administrate is report.
Okay, Jay had concerns about the overhead door to salt sheds not working properly.
Again?
Yeah, having some issues with it. Contacted PDQ, so they're going to be there on Wednesday to take a look at it, hopefully repair it. I'm also going to ask them to take care of the lever handle on the entrance door, because that's not working properly, it's hard to even get the door unlocked, so I'll see what they can do about that.
At the, at the salt shed or?
At the salt shed. Um, you might consider, um, just to make sure that we don't miss anything each year with the contractors, because I don't want them, their job to be harder than it needs to be. You might consider entering into a maintenance agreement with PDQ. If you think that might be a good idea, I can have them come up with a program and share it with you in the next meeting.
So what other doors is, are the fire doors part of them?
Chief Bean uses PDQ for the fire doors, he doesn't currently have a maintenance agreement, but when I talked with him about it, he said, you know, that might not be a bad idea.
So we, we do it.
But they have people here, you know, he has a whole crew that knows how to tinker and fix things.
Yeah, but if there's a part missing or something.
Right.
It's, or just a weather stripping or whatever, it becomes more complex.
Yeah, so it's something to consider, I'll find out how much it is, if it makes sense. Sandra Baddaskow applied to become a committee member on the planning board. We do have two seats available for alternates. I didn't know if you would be interested in appointing additional people at this time.
So we have five seated.
So we have two alternates open. So alternates with the opportunity to work with businesses.
Right. And she was an alternate, but he's now a regular member.
Alternates, acquaintance MMA, don't sit at the table and do decision-making at the meetings unless the regular member is missing.
But they can learn, attend meetings and learn, and that's a being an alternate.
Yes.
You, you also don't know whether or not you're going to be needed often until you're there, so.
Yeah, we try to check in beforehand, yes, but.
She is a, she's an intelligent person who's worked in NGO situations. I think, I think it would be worth talking with her.
Who is this?
Sandra Baddaskow. My neighbor is my. She's newer to the town and just really getting involved.
Yeah, she really has a desire to be involved in some capacity.
She's also on our broadband as well as.
Right.
Sounds like.
Yes.
Committee as well.
Yes.
I'd say you never turn, bump into your wife, period. She might be interested in working with the comprehensive.
I was saying that same thing, tell us she can, we're happy to have her as an alternate and on the comprehensive plan. It's a two-for-one transaction.
All right.
We're offering a sale right now, it's two-for-one. I think she might be interested in that.
Okay, I'll have to chat with her. Norwich Solar, we talked about a proposed project in the vicinity of Wing Farm, where they want to, the company is proposing an expansion of the urban development zone. They have come up with a rezoning plan, they're wondering what their next step is in order to possibly prepare for this to come to a vote at our annual town meeting.
Have they spoken to you?
They.
This is up on the other side, right?
Right.
Yes, yeah, they did the game. So the planning board, one evening, we sat down, we said, you know, part of the land is in the urban development, part of it is not, that they had to come to you for rezoning to see if that's something that the selectmen in the town wanted to do. We gave them instructions of sort of how that works, but send them to you first, yes.
I think we should check with the neighbors that they're going to be rezoned.
Well, that, that's sort of, that's what I was trying to get at. I wanted to at least talk it through and see what you thought made sense, because they did reach out to the adjacent owners, but none of those abutting owners responded to their requests for, you know, conversation about the plans.
That's community impact.
Does the board want to speak with the abutting owners?
Where are they, where are they talking about, do you know this? This is not the same people that we're talking about.
No, this is Wing Farm.
It's, it's at the end of the Van de Werf's property, up top there on the hill by the old water tower. On the other side of the highway.
Yeah, right.
You go to Sanford's Crossing, you go all the way to the end.
Yeah.
Where Nies used to live in the loins, and then you go up and over through the hill, Van de Werf bought a bunch of land up and in there, Jay.
Jay's on the.
Jay Omo owned the very top, so it's Omo's land or old land or, I don't know who it belongs to now, but it's way up and on the hill. So when you're cresting the hill headed towards Brunswick and the rest area used to be there, it's up in that top hill, up and over there, so you go through Sanford's Crossing to get up there.
I think it's important we check with the neighbors that were planning on rezoning, on what their thoughts are before we make that decision.
Yeah, and you know what, I, my gut tells me that they're reluctant to talk to the developers, and they would be more receptive to talking with the town, and it might be a good idea to reach out to them and invite them to a meeting. And I, and it's a possibility to, you know, if, if you talk to those adjacent owners and they're like, you know.
If they're way, way, way against it, that kind of gives you the decision, I think, from that perspective.
Or if we're still not sure if it's, it could be a viable project, maybe send it to the planning board for review at that time.
I think, I think we need to hear what the neighbors have to say before we even send it off to the planning board.
Yeah, I think so too.
I don't, if, if everyone's against it, I don't think it's beneficial to, to that. Maybe they need to review, shrink their plan.
Yeah.
You know, instead of, but I think it's important that we hear what the abutting neighbors have to say.
Yeah, because my concern is, is that we skip that conversation with the neighbors, and we put it forward at a town meeting, and the townspeople don't understand the impact that it will have on that.
I think it's important to know.
So, okay, then I'll reach out to them and invite them to a meeting, and I think they'll be receptive to that. I think that's probably the best way of approaching it. And we'll take it from there. Sound good?
Yeah, there's no point, we're going to all the effort of introducing this new, of changing zoning, if the people who live there are opposed to it. That just doesn't seem right.
Is based on the new policy you brought around tonight?
Huh?
Is based on the new policy?
Right.
Of notifying the boroughs what's going on.
Well, we always notify the boroughs.
No, I know, I'm just saying, these guys should be, I'm just saying these people should be notified.
Yeah, this isn't necessarily a planning board issue yet, and it may not come to that.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, in general, you should notify people what's going on in the town.
Right.
If it affects them.
Absolutely.
Okay, the Jensen Bear Client Seminar is on the 16th, I just wanted to put out a reminder for that, you're all signed up, Carly and I are signed up as well.
If we travel together, is that an illegal meeting?
No, that's fine, just don't talk business, or Carly's going to have the recorder on.
I'll have it with me, just in case.
I'm scared.
Just in case I have to report it to the press, so.
I would love to travel with somebody else, we'll see what they don't have.
Yeah, I think.
Well, Carly and I are planning on leaving the office at 5:00 when we close.
So I can take Scott's van and put us all in the van if you want one driver.
That would be best, and that way they can't say that we have a meeting we have.
Is there room for the rest of us? So, yeah, I think that's fine.
So we'll all be at town hall?
At 5:00.
At 5:00. Will be no singing in the car?
I didn't say that.
You talk, will be no singing.
So leave a little room for food, there's white supper. Check-in is from 5:30 to 6:00.
As in Portland? Me? No, she's on. I drive. So is, is half an hour enough to get down to Portland?
Um, we probably, no, but Carly and I can't even till 5:00, so.
Check-in is until 6:00.
Check-in is until 6:00.
Oh, I thought we had to be there at 5:30, okay.
Please don't make it Portland half an hour.
Fasten your seatbelt, I'm driving myself if that's the case.
Morse High School and Bath Tech are having a ribbon cutting on September 15th, and you've been invited. No, I'm sorry, it's Wednesday, September 22nd.
Okay.
At 6:00 PM is the ribbon cutting. You leave to RSVP by September 15th. You can have a tour of the facilities.
Must be masked.
It must be masked. So if anybody has any interest, you know? Julie and Ron are working feverishly on the tax commitment, she's not going to have it ready for a regular meeting, so she's hoping that you can find time to have a special meeting just for the tax commitment. Possibly next week. Is anybody aware of any conflicts being scheduled?
There's nothing that can't be moved in by them.
While you're thinking on that, I have a question. For someone who has an open abatement for something that was last year, is that going to be compounded by errors rounding over to this year's commitment, so I need to do another abatement on top of the first one? Time-wise?
Yes, that's generally how it works, because it's going to be the same.
Why are we not doing that?
Well, if they till Thursday, it'll be done.
Because the Board of Appeals hasn't been.
When do they meet?
The 8th.
Wednesday. So it'll be Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they can come to an agreement, but they may not be done by then.
You can't hold it off a week? Just to spare someone?
We can hold it off a week, yeah. We can, if they're going to make a decision in that time.
I don't think we should put her through that again.
They don't have to. I don't think we should put her through that again, they don't have to.
No, if you consider that.
It'll be my lawyer.
They don't have to make a conclusion that night.
No, they don't, that's what I'm saying, they may not come to a decision that night.
How long do they have to make a decision? I don't recall.
Well, they have to start the process within sixty days.
Oh, my word.
Which they will have started it on Wednesday.
How long, do they traditionally make a decision that evening? There's no.
The last one, they did not make a decision that night and they reconvened a week later, so. Traditionally, it's not extended, however, with only three members, it has been exceptionally difficult to get all three of them to.